Alright, good morning everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMBJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Echols is not present. Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a Coram present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Tolls to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most gracious and holy Father, as we approach your throne of grace, and as we have entered into this resurrection season, we just thank you for your darling son, Jesus. And we come this morning, this afternoon, praying for our council meeting, those that are represented here. We pray for our constituents that are represented here. And we pray that wisdom and knowledge will avail in our meeting. We just give you all the praise and all the glory. And we just thank you for this country, this state, this city, and especially for our leadership. Guide us, teach us, and show us the direction that you would have us to go. We just give you praise and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work sessions and city council meetings held on March 29th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 24th through the 31st.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
Is Ms. Becky Davis here?
Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. Approximately 30,970 candidates on the nation's organ transplant waiting list received a life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplant in 2015. Of those, 395 received an organ transplant in Alabama. A new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every 21 minutes. More than 121,416 men, women, and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantations, of which approximately 3,294 are in Alabama. 6,045 candidates on the national waiting list died waiting for an organ transplant, which did not come in time. Of those 169 were on Alabama's waiting list. The Alabama Organ Center is a nonprofit independent organ recovery organization dedicated to the recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transplantation therapy. Whereas Gaston, Alabama supports the Alabama Organ Center's life-saving mission, therefore I sherman and guide the Mayor of the City of Gaston to hereby proclaim April 2016 as Donate Life Month in Gaston, Alabama, to honor all those who have given the gift of life. We focus our efforts on extreme need for organ and tissue donors, and we encourage residents to designate their donation decisions and share the decision to donate with family members.
Just want to thank everybody for saying yes to donation and saving lives and giving life a second chance. Thank you, sir. Oh, wait, thank you, sir.
Item number eight is unfinished business. Item number eight A is the nuisances on property located at 503 South 13th Street have been abated by the owner. Therefore, no action by the council is needed. Item number eight B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1503 Roosevelt Avenue in District 5, Henry J. Fletcher and wife Lily Mae Fletcher care of Henry Fletcher Jr. being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for seven days on March 29th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 606 Frederick Street in District 1, Valerie Player being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes.
If you would come up.
You would come up?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You'll come up to this podium here and give us your name and your address. And just as a reminder, as you speak to your issues, please refrain from referencing anyone by their name. Okay?
Okay. My name is Valerie Player. I reside at 336 North 10th Street, but I am the owner of 606 Frederick Street. I'm sorry that I didn't bring any pictures, but I did apply to the ordinance on fixing up some of the small things. The house is not abandoned. It had wood over because looters and breaking the windows and stuff, and they were scoring in. But as of now, the house is livable. My son lives in it. I took down the wood and I helped about it. About what you asked me to repair. I saw some painting and a few small things. I think it was like screen job asked me for them. But the house is livable. All I need to know is what to do. I need to do, I need a little bit more time. I'll paint the house and I'll put the screens. But someone is living in it. It has light, gas, water well light, some total electric. And it's livable. And if I need some more time, when I did it, it was close to the end of winter. And we are gonna paint and about the roofs that you asked me to buy about. And I can come back and bring the pictures when I'm through with it. But we did straighten it up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And that's all. I just asked for more time to finish out everything else. That's fine.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. I was hoping Ms. Player would show up. We haven't had the opportunity to meet or discuss this issue. There have been several improvements made to the property, and we certainly looking forward to working with her, seeing that the rest of them are done. Had she not shown up, I would gonna report to the council. We were gonna plug this in our rehab program anyway. So I'll talk with her after the meeting today. And I would certainly recommend that we table this case for 30 days. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to or in favor of this What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we give up 30 days.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
The nuisances on property located at 608 Frederick Street have been abated by the owner. Therefore, no action by the council is needed. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1133 Litchfield Avenue in District 2, Blaylock Rental Properties LLC and HSBC Mortgage Corporation being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Come on up, The same applies, ma'am. If you would, give us your name and address, and just please try to refrain from referring to anyone by name.
Good morning. My name is Jahan Burns. I am an attorney with Cerote and Permat in Birmingham. I'm here representing Federal National Mortgage Services, Fannie Mae, which has an interest in the property. And we received a notice a few days ago, and I believe I reached out to Mr. Harbison. I believe that Fannie Mae servicer is trying to get bids to remove the debris. I understand that's the situation, that there's debris and trash. And I think that they are in the process of trying to get bids to clear that. So I request for 30 days to see what could be done. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our process in May of 2015. We're certainly not opposed to the improvements being done. There have been no permits obtained. There are no improvements as of today. We were gonna ask for a resolution to abate the nuisance. I'm certainly not opposed to giving 30 days to working with the mortgage company, try to line up a contractor.
I move that we give the...
30 days.
30 days.
Table for 30 days.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I mean, again, we're not interested in doing anything, you know, aggressive as it relates to abating the nuisance. So if 30 days will help, you know, please make sure you have a conversation with Mr. Harbison, and I'm sure he'll provide adequate direction on it. Okay? Alright, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 437 Evans Street in District 3, Teddy Kirby Jr. being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed our case in May of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 931 South 11th Street in District 5, the State of Alabama, and Dolores Ann Vaughn being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, our case was filed in May of last year. There've been no improvements, so there are no permits to improve. This property is unsecure as of today, and we're
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 919 Holly Street in District 5, Billy Terrence Warren and Virginia D. Warren and Regions Mortgage, Inc., first commercial mortgage company being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Billy, if you would, just give us your name and address, and again, just try to refrain from referring to anyone by name.
Okay. Name is Billy Warren. I reside at 501 Cary Drive in Birmingham, Alabama. My first notice of this incident on my property was in October, end of September, then October, I purchased a building permit and tried to get back and forth from work and do the repairs on my own. I just asked for a little bit more time to do the repairs. I repaired a little bit on the exterior walls, on the outside, fixed my porch, re-stabbed my pillars for my porch. Was in the process of getting my shingles and stuff tomorrow. I'm finna get somebody to help me do my roof this week, start on my roof. So I'm just really asking for a little bit more time to finish up doing my property. I don't wanna get it messed up, and I'm still paying for it. I don't see why nobody wouldn't wanna keep up something they paying for. Just ask for a little bit more time.
Okay. Mr. Warren, how much time are you talking about? Now, I live two doors down from that house, and I know what's been done on that house, and not a whole lot has been done since the last time you called and asked about the house.
Last time when you was doing your bricks in front of yours, I moved, I towed down the garage. It was in the back. It was coming down. I moved all that stuff. Just gotta move the rest of the debris. Like I said, I replaced the wall that was, put the water damage. I replaced that, fixed that. And like I say, I worked 12 hours a day. Work at St. Clair Correctional. So they make you work, making us work extra day on the weekend of the day. So it's kinda hard for me to get back and forth, try to get up when I work on my off days. I work nights here so I can get up to come up there to do work on my house. Keep my yard clean, 'cause there ain't no growth on my house, on the grass and everything. If you give me 30 days and I get the roof up, you'll still see I'm doing something.
Yeah. And what has happened, that, your house, in front of your house has become the community dumping, putting stuff, people putting stuff over there on that property. That's the problem, that, you know, nobody is around there to keep them from doing that.
Yeah. Yes. Like I say, I do stay in Birmingham. The process is getting the debris picked up. Yeah, I noticed today when I came up, somebody done put their balloons and...
Yeah, that's what they do when you don't maintain.
TV boxes and stuff in front of my house, you know, trying to, they even covered up my water meter with some grass. Somebody cut the yard and I put over there. Like I said, I understand all that. Just like I said, I just need a little bit more time to get the roof on, 'cause that's the, the little debris up there, I can get it up.
Yeah.
Then they won't have to put no debris in my yard. I don't know, forces, other stuff on next door and then door down, you know, it could be them putting there. I don't know.
No, I have an idea. I have not seen who's done it, but I have an idea who has done it. But if you don't see it, you can't prove it.
Yeah.
But I just know that it has become the community dump area, because there's nobody there to want it. And I know you, you know, like I said, I don't have a problem. Have you talked to the building inspector about...
I got a building permit. I came up and got a building permit.
When that building permit was gotten, have you talked recently to him about making some improvements?
Well, he gave me a, checked off what the improvements need to be made when I came got the building permit. And I put the building permit on the front of the door, covering up the old nuisance, old building permit I had when somebody was supposed to be, originally fixing my roof, but they backed down, yeah, messed over. Took my money and ran.
After this meeting, if you would, get with that gentleman right there, we don't have a problem getting it fixed. I mean, you know, getting it done, but we just need to know some progress. And that's not a problem, because we don't wanna put people out of houses. We want them to maintain their houses. But if nobody's around, then people dump stuff. So after the meeting, I'm recommending a 30-day extension to take care of it.
I'm his father, Billy Warren, but I'll come back each week to check, to see, you know, if stuff being put on the property and to make sure that it be...
Okay, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, our case was filed in May of last year. We're certainly not opposed to the property owner doing the necessary work. I'll be glad to discuss with him after the meeting. Has been accessory building torn down in the rear yard. Most of that has been cleaned up. Like Councilman Billingsley reported earlier, it's just been placed out on the street, which has encouraged others to dump along with that. He did obtain a building permit in October of last year. And like I said, if the council chooses to table this, I'll be glad to discuss with him what needs to be done. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for a 30-day extension, please.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 905 Spruce Street in District 5, the State of Alabama, Joe R. Hope and Ernest D. Cordell being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in June of last year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3506 Sooty Avenue in District 6, Sue Bragg being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
I'm Sue Bragg. I have this...
Ma'am, excuse me. Just for the record, again, if you could give us your name and your address.
Okay. Sue Bragg, 6360 Highway 431 North, Etala, Alabama. I do not live at this structure that I'm here today. Okay? I bought it for taxes.
Okay.
Okay. Alright. I would first like to show you two pictures of the two houses. There's two houses here that's enclosed in a chain. May I show it to you? It's a chain-linked fence, and someone has went out and put new chain and locks on the place where no one can get in. I don't know how, when this was done, but I just saw it the other day, and I can't get in. But anyhow, I bought it for taxes in May of 2015, and then I did get a construction permit on June 10th, 2015. I went out to the property and placed the permit on the building, and the girl next door, the lady next door, her name, am I allowed to call names?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The lady next door came out and asked me why I was placing this permit there, and I told her that I had purchased it. And she said, well, she owned it, and she lives in that house that you see in that picture there. But then she said that she would go to the courthouse and get it straightened out. And of course, she did, and I heard later that she pitched a little obscene or something at the courthouse. Anyway, a lady called me from the courthouse and very loudly asked me what authority that I have to go on the property. And I said, well, I received a statement from the city that it had to be cleaned up, and it was a nuisance. So I went back and told this lady, you know, that the yard and everything had to be cleaned up. And I gave her the opportunity, you know, to pay the taxes, you know, take it back if she wanted to. And she said the man that she was buying it from was supposed to pay the taxes, not her. Okay, I let it go. And then in 2016, I received another tax notice. And so I knew then that she didn't pay the taxes, and so I paid them again. And then on March the 23rd, I received a notice from the city building department that it was a nuisance. So when I went out there to look at it, that's when I saw that all the, you know, both houses were chained and newly locked. And also, the house was empty. The girl did not live there anymore. Now, I'm trying to locate the girl, and I have gone back so far as to find out where her husband works. And he works for the Housing Authority in Gaston. And he was supposed to have called me or my partner last night, and he didn't do that. So maybe we'll get a call today. I don't know. But I'm just asking for maybe two or three days to find this person and find out what he wants to do. And if he don't want it, then I would like to go ahead and give me 30 days, please, to go ahead and move the trampoline that's in the front yard. And I don't think there's much, any debris out there, but a window has been either took out. It might have been boarded and the board taken down. But if you'll give me 30 days, I can make this to satisfy the City of Gaston and the way it looks. And I would probably make a little apartment out of it. All I need is 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in June of last year. This property involves non-conforming structure and non-conforming use in that this is a commercial building that has found its way into the middle of a residential district. Once it reached the point of disrepair, where the city had to initiate condemnation, then there's only two options the owner has. One is remove the structure or make it so that it does conform to a residential district. And the only option, and I discussed this with the owner recently, Ms. Bragg, that it could be made into a dwelling unit, but of course it would have to pass all of our codes in order to do that. There was a building permit taken out in June of last year. We just don't feel enough has been done. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Mr. Harbison, who took the building permit out? Can you tell me that, in June of last year?
Who took it out? Ms. Bragg.
Okay.
May I sit down?
Come to the mic, please.
And looking at, and looking at the building, it is a brick structure. In looking at, in looking at the building, uh, it is a brick structure and block on the inside, and it has a metal roof. So I'm sure that, uh, I can make a nice looking building. Every house that I own, I try to, to make it as, uh, as presentable to the city and, and to satisfy them as I can. And I think I've done so, so far.
Ms. Bragg, can I ask you one question just for my being here?
Yes.
How come all your property that you, that's condemned, you always come up here at the last minute? I mean, are there some kind of problem you have doing that? I mean, this is, you've been up before, correct, on some more places?
Yeah, I've, I've been up here twice.
Yes, ma'am. How come it gets to the last, last day?
Well, I have several that I'm working on, but it is, it don't take that much. And here again, the courthouse and calling me and asking me what right do I have on the property? You know, I, I would like to be given permission, uh, to go on the property and start doing something right away. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in between here, and I could do something right away, except for that lady calling me and asking me what right did I have to go on that property? And they say that it's not yours for three years.
Who, who, who at the courthouse called you and told you this?
I'm not supposed to call any names.
They got me there, got you.
But, but if you're in, if you're in a legal squabble, uh, somebody has got to be held responsible.
Okay, now, there is a man that owns it, and I, I have found out the man's name, and like I said, he works for the Housing Authority. And if he wants to pay me my taxes back,
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be happy to do so, but I don't want to lose money here. And, you know, I, I can, uh, I can make something out of this. I can, uh, it'll be suitable for Mr. Harbison. He, I always do what he tells me to do, don't I? But, but that's the reason. Uh, but it, would y'all give me permission today to go on the property, break the chains and go on the property?
We can't give you permission to do that.
We can't do that, can we?
I think that we're, what we've got here is... Yeah, Ms. Harbison wants to speak to us. Remember time before I comment on this.
Yeah, I, I reviewed the tile opinion. Ms. Bragg is the owner. She is the only one listed as the owner. There's not another individual. I'm not sure who she's communicated with, but, um, she has all the rights to this property. Uh, if there's something that would, uh, prohibit her from entering onto that property, um, you know, you can ask Mr. Roberts. I believe that she has a right to remove whatever obstruction that is and enter into it. It's her property. Thank you.
With that, so that would, that would tell me that there's, yeah, that there's been a tax deed or something issued at some point. It's not, yeah.
Is this your attorney, Ms. Bragg, just wanting to speak?
No.
Okay.
All right, is there, there anyone else? Go ahead.
This is a kind of a strange situation. We've, we know who owns the property, Ms. Bragg. You should have been able to go on there like Mr. Harbison said. You're the owner of the property, what Mr. Harbison says. We don't, the council don't do any title searches. He does all that, and we go by what he says.
If I hadn't known that...
I beg your pardon?
If I, if I had really known that I was owning, I could build the property anytime I wanted to, this was already been taken care of. But that lady was living there and, and, you know, she was running me off and, and tore down the confidence, and I had no courage to go on the property.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a... For the simple reason that you come up here the last day all the time for us, and you've admitted you've come before, I'm gonna give you, ask for a fourteen day table that, would fourteen days help you get this up and going? I mean, I'm gonna ask for a fourteen day table since she does know she's the owner, and she needs to make considerable headway. Well, Mr. Harbison, you need to get with him and find out what you're gonna do. I know it's gonna be something besides that window and that trampoline, and you might, after this, you might not want to spend the money that he wants you to spend. I want you to bring it up to code. I don't want you to throw your money away for something that can't be fixed. Do you know what I mean? So ask for a fourteen day table, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for fourteen days, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for fourteen days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at twenty three ten Clayton Avenue in District Seven, Don Berkey, Juanita... Juanita Berkey, just a second, sir. Juanita Berkey and Ricky Leath being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, based on the improvements of this property, we're gonna ask this case to be tabled thirty days, and I included that in my memo to the council. Thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion? What is the pleasure of the council?
We go along with the thirty day. Um, the houses on that street were in ill repair. We've replaced a bunch. I mean, we abated a few. And I was set this morning to go ahead and vote to abate, but I go along with the building department this time. Ask for a thirty day.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for thirty days, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for thirty days.
Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at twenty four Winona Avenue, Scott and Pamela McDaniel being the last known owners. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is three thousand two hundred six dollars and forty cents. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Ma'am, if you would, just give us your name and address, and as we've told the others, please refrain from, uh, referring to anyone by name.
I'm Pamela McDaniel, who resides at nine oh seven Payton Road, Gaston.
I'm Scott, husband. Uh, we lived at this Winona for twenty five years, and we moved to the Glencoe area here just a few years ago. And, uh, we kept stuff in the house, but I've, I've done stuff to the house off and on. And, uh, the house is gone. I mean, I wouldn't care about paying for this right here, but the day before they tore the house down, two city men come to the house and kicked the door in and stole a bunch of stuff. The girl across the street, our neighbor for all these years, called me, said two city men is out there in the truck, loading the pickup truck. Had a ladder and, uh...
Hand trucks.
Hand trucks. I don't know whether, time I got over, they was gone. They squealed out of the yard. Okay, the next morning I went over there. They was tearing the house down.
We didn't get a notice or nothing.
We never did get a letter in the mail, nothing. We get, we get these things in the mail about paying the taxes and things, but I didn't get no letter in the mail.
No, no letter at all about tearing down the house, but we've got, uh, uh, the thing for to pay the taxes sent, uh, nine oh seven Payton Road. We have gotten, um, what the bill is for them tearing it down at our address, and he went over there to find out when the lady called us from across the street and told us they were tearing our house down without our knowledge, and he went over there and asked them who was, who was ahead of all this, and nobody knew anything, and finally somebody came over.
Well, they stopped, they stopped right then. I was kind of ill about it, and the city guys had a whole pile of metal and water pipe all in the road right here. I mean, that's my stuff there. Another was gonna do it, sell it or what else?
But we still had furniture, clothing.
All that's watered up, gone.
Transmissions.
Well...
In a building.
The house is gone. Right, the house is gone. I had a garage on the property. It's gone, full of all kinds. I had a transmission in there, clothes, cabinet, fire department give me, tile, I had ceramic tile in there. It's all gone. A whole lot. All that was worth more than three thousand dollars for the house, what the city people got. Now, I think it is. I mean, do they have a right to go in, kick in the house, get what they want? I don't think so.
And why weren't we notified that the house was being torn down?
We didn't get things. Seemed like they gave us a certified letter or something. If I know that, I would have got the stuff out.
Two, are y'all finished?
Well, sort of.
Go ahead and keep going till you get through, and I can answer all those questions.
Well, go ahead and tell me why the city guy...
The first thing is, we don't have keys to access to get into any houses, any houses that's been condemned, that's been condemned for a while like yours was, and you had a permit. The building inspector comes by and checks it frequently and sees if there's any work being done on it. You gotta satisfy so much work on that house to get it out of the nuisance and abatement. Second of all, you said where they came in and kicked the door down, the city, uh, the supervisor at Public Works goes in and kicks the doors. That's the only way we can get in there. We don't have... We don't have any keys to the picture property. He kicks the doors with his foot, kicks in, goes in there, makes sure there's no, nothing inside the house whatsoever. If there was anything inside the house, he has to take pictures of everything that's in the house. He takes pictures of it. He gives those pictures to Mr. Harbison, the building department. They take that stuff that's in the house, anything that's in that house that worth value, they take it and store it, and it can be yours once, you know, if you ask for it back, you can get it back. The next thing you said that you weren't notified by registered mail. We don't send registered mail to people about that, but I had a conversation with Mr. Harbison right before this went down, and he told me that, if I'm not correct, Mr. Harbison, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't you say Mr. McDaniel's and somebody else came to your office about the demolition of the property? Okay, so y'all was, actually you was notified because you went to Mr. Harbison's office?
Mr. Harbison told him that they would send us a letter before.
We didn't get a letter.
We did not get a letter of no kind.
We don't actually send registered letters, but when you came to Mr. Harbison and was gonna demolo it yourself, you knew right then, you and whoever came with him, that they was gonna push the house down.
I worked on, I worked on the house. They, they might have before and aftershocks. I'm just, I'm just kind of upset about all the stuff they got. I mean, is that right or wrong?
You're, you're welcome to, uh, this is not really the place to air what was in that house out or anything. What you're, uh, welcome to do is go up to, on the fourth floor, to the attorney's office, and you can file a claim, and he can get to the bottom of it, see what was there, what they've turned in, the pictures they gave Mr. Harbison. And if there was anything in the house, they, they bound to make pictures of all that. You can file a, you can file a claim with the, the law. Go to the city clerk's office first.
Why did they tear down the building in the back? There was nothing wrong with it at all.
They don't leave anything on a piece of property once they do it.
Well, they want no reason to tear the trees all to pieces for the gra... Before all this happened, somebody come over in a backhoe and tore some of the foundation off for no reason, all way before all this happened.
You don't know who it was that did that?
I wasn't over there.
It wasn't the city, the city don't come on a piece of property until it's ready to be pushed down.
I don't have a backhoe. I have a bobcat, but I hadn't been over there. Somebody tore up a tree and knocked some of the foundation off of the backhoe. I wasn't there.
Had you been getting any letters about grass cutting, anything?
No.
Had city cut the grass?
I keep the grass up. I have been.
Okay, I don't, I don't know about that, but I know the city didn't come and do any of that stuff until the day they push it down. That's when they do their demolition.
Somebody had been over there.
The what?
Somebody had been over there because they broke, I had planted a corkscrew willow tree in the side right there. Somebody had come in with, we don't know, like he said, it looked like a backhoe or something, and they knocked some limbs off of that. They knocked some, uh, underpan, knocked what is called foundation out from under. And even when the city come in our house, they went in there and kicked the toilet over and all this other stuff, you know, and it's... But like I said, we didn't get a letter, and he told my husband that we would get a letter before they tore down the house, you know, that he could try to find somebody to tear it down. And I was sick at the time. I've had a lot of health problems, and he's, he was trying his best to do what he could, and we, he told him that they would get a letter before it would be torn down, and we did not get a letter. So we could get our stuff out.
And, uh, I got most of the stuff out, but, I mean, you know, just, anyway, they had all this stuff on the side of the road right there.
Oh, yeah, I was done.
And we were informed that they had, that they sent a letter to, uh, about tearing it down, wasn't it, to twenty four Winona Avenue. They do not deliver mail to a condemned house, is what we were told. And after he told him that, he said, well, he went over there and put it in the mailbox himself.
I didn't believe that for a second. The little Greer guy, I called his office three times, trying to see where my stuff was.
Excuse me.
Sir, please don't.
You can't say, he mentioned anyone's name there?
That's all I know. He gave me a card. And, uh, he, uh, I called his office, didn't know return three different times.
Sir.
And when we went to pay the taxes on the house to find out why we are still having to pay that much for a condemned house, every time we'd go over there, nobody would be in there.
At the county, yes, the county issue, not the city.
Mr. and Mrs. McDaniel, you, you guys, we appreciate you guys have been very clear about the circumstances of your issues. So what we would ask you to do is there's both an investigative and a claims process that you can follow. Uh, as was mentioned, if you want to file a claim for your personal effects, you can do that on the, uh, fourth floor in the city clerk's office. Uh, and, uh, and then, of course, uh, you, you can, you're, you're also welcome to file a legal claim, uh, at some level. And it, I, I think it's gonna obviously be discussed from an investigative perspective after today's meeting. So, so I think you've been very clear on what your concerns are, and we can walk away from those.
We just couldn't understand why we didn't get anything other than just what we owe and taxes. It was all coming to our house where we live now, but anything else, we got nothing.
Well, the house taxes is separate. They come from the county, but this thirty two oh six forty, y'all said y'all was willing to pay that, correct?
To make pay?
Yeah, you can make payments, Mr. Harbison, if you're just...
Well, this right here, I'll be cleared up before anything else. I'll...
Oh, I don't know.
Well, you have to, if you're gonna make payments, you have to get Mr. Harbison on that set about the monthly payments. They usually around a hundred bucks to pay it, you know, my...
Well, just like this stuff right here, how long is this gonna take, all this replaced?
I have no idea. Like I said, just have to file the claims.
This was worth more than what tearing the house down was.
We'll just have to do that though.
Yeah, you just have to file the claim on that.
But we, like I said, we were upset that we got no notice whatsoever to get our stuff out because it was personal. I've got a wedding dress that was in there that can never be replaced.
Well, anyways, a bunch of things. We just didn't get a letter, everything but a letter. You know, I had plenty of time, plenty of vehicles to move the stuff. We, we moved out Glencoe, got two houses out there and plenty of room, but I could move it anytime, but kicking down the house and taking your stuff, I mean...
You should, you should, I, I feel like you should notify somebody before you go in their house, because they could let you in, you know what I'm saying? We would have been glad to go up there and open it up and let them in. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. McDaniel. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move on this, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I'm sorry, we have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance. The city code, uh, does not currently have a minimum square footage requirement for residential dwellings, and there is a growing trend for tiny houses. In an effort to protect the character of existing residential subdivisions, this amendment has been requested by the planning and building departments. It would require the floor area of a one-family dwelling to be a minimum of nine hundred square feet. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will hold on it next week. Item number twenty is a resolution authorizing purchase from Rarick Pacific Company through the Houston Galveston Area Council Purchasing Cooperative. This is for four hundred and eighty-six residential garbage containers and two hundred additional wheels, and the amount is twenty-five thousand four hundred one dollars and ten cents. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, new business? Do we have any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's ordinance two oh two, adopting the community development block grant, CDBG program, fiscal year twenty sixteen, annual action plan, and fiscal year twenty sixteen, CDBG budget. As for unanimous consent, consider.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, I have one. I'm not asking for unanimous consent. I'm gonna bring it up today in the first reading, and we can vote on it next week. It's an agreement with the Edward County Community Action Agency, giving the mayor to authorize and execute an agreement in the amount of $12,000 with Edward County Community Action. And then I have one that will, that the general fund budget adopt by ordinance zero, that's 2415, fiscal year budget 2016, and amend and then transfer in the $12,000 from the unassigned fund balance into the outside agency, Edward County Community Action. And the funds will be used by Edward County Community Action operating.
Will those funds be used for Gaston residents only?
Yes.
Gaston residents only, correct?
Yes.
Okay, both of those items will be, were issued today for a first reading and will be considered next week by the council. Okay, is there any additional new business? Department reports, boards, committees. Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor? Councilwoman Tovis?
Yes, I have an announcement, and this is concerning the Black Creek Trail system tour. The tours are gonna start this Saturday at nine, and the tours will be the second and fourth Saturday in April, then June and September to October, if the weather permits. The tours will leave the campground office at 9:00 a.m. each time. This coming weekend, we're having a smoke on the falls, so there might be a problem with parking, but you still can go and see those trails. They're beautiful. It's beautiful up there, and it will get beautiful as the time goes on. And also, one other thing, the proclamation that was given to the organ donor, I'm very much in favor of that. I have a brother who had a bilateral lung transplant, and he's alive today because of that. And so I'm very supportive of that, and I'm glad that we support that organization.
Okay. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, I have one item from the last week, where the young man came up and said that we are tore his house down in six months. And I asked Mr. Harbison to get me the paperwork on it. We started the case on June the 14th of 2012. Okay, the owner obtained a permit to repair on June the 29th, 2012. Then the owner obtained a demolition permit on June 9th of 2014. Then the city council passed the resolution on October 27th, 2015. So the total time of working this case was three years and four months, not six months. And I just want the people, the City of Gaston, the citizens, to know that we are not gonna knock your house down within six months. And I also would like to ask how, I don't know how hard this would be, that we get some type of projection system where we could put the pictures of these houses that we're knocking down up so the community can see what we're knocking down? And this was a suggestion, because I got several calls afterwards, after the meeting last week. And then the other young man that spoke, he owned several properties in the community that need to be knocked down. I got calls on that. So we're not just trying to knock your house down, but like we said last week, you know, the property value goes down if you don't keep up your property, and we don't want the property. Matter of fact, we got an update from the mayor this morning at the work session on the land bank. So we'll be able to get rid of this property. We're just waiting for them to appoint the board members. Is that right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, is that possible? I know there'll be more work on the City Clerk's office, but...
Depends on how far you're talking, because I can't see that part.
Council President, I asked Mr. Harbison a question before council meeting about the pictures that we see, and he was saying maybe not, say, the ones that he presented there. That's why we got Channel 99, so maybe they could be projected on Channel 99. But he would have to find out if that could legally be done. So, say like the pictures we saw today, then they would go on the Channel 99 after this meeting. Because the public needs to see what we see, and probably they would come up here and tell us to tear them down faster than we do.
Amen.
So, we really want you to keep up your property. Well, we won't have to knock it down, because we have to pay the taxes on it and stuff. So just keep that in mind. And I look for a reason to try to keep you in your property or keep the property, because the city don't want it. We have too much property. So thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Councilman Billings?
Yes, I'd like to announce that District Five will have a community meeting at the public library, April the 11th, from five to six. This is a time for you to come out and express your opinions about things in the community. So if you would, we'll see you on the 11th of April at the public library. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Jack's Mountain Club, the Lyer's Club, the Lyer's Table on the mountain. This morning, they, they gave me a proclamation and a plaque for my holy one on March the 30th. However, there, my witnesses are under scrutiny at the present time. But anyway, they gave me a plaque, and they gave me a diamond pin, and I thought maybe y'all would recognize that. It's really a dime on a safety pin. But it is the thought that counts. So, fellas, I really appreciate it. I really, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. Is there anything else? Okay, entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Amen. Bein' you keep that fair.
Hey, work. Hey. Mr. Engineer. Diamond pin. I thought I really had one.